All right, everybody, welcome to the April 1st Village of Flower Hill Board of Trustees Meeting. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will have my friend, Mr. Murphy, the attorney, lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, you lead us. Sir, go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you can move with the, uh, the thing.
Okay, so the first thing we are going to do is acknowledge that we had an election and that, um, oh, and Ms. Dorfman is here. So it's also has won the election. Uh, there were, there were no opossession. And, um, so, uh, the mayor and Ms. Dorfman, Mr. Wodowski, and, uh, trustee Smith, uh, are all deemed sworn in again for another two-year term. Um, they've all signed the book. So I just want to announce as part of our annual organizational meeting, their term is beginning as of today.
As well as, uh, Justice Rissman.
As well as Justice Rissman, who has already signed the other. Okay, so the first thing we do is pass our annual organizational meeting resolution. Um, it's quite long. Mayor, would you like me to read it, or would you like us to just, uh, put it into the record?
I believe we can just put it into the record.
Thank you. Okay, but I do need someone to offer that resolution and a second.
I'll offer that resolution.
And you'll offer a second.
I'll second.
Justine Collins, okay, full in favor?
Aye.
Oh, submitted. Thank you. Um, the next item, they are the mayor's appointments. Um, Mayor, do you want to go through them, or would you like to add them into the record?
The only addition I would like to make to this is adding, um, Adam, his last name is?
Horwitz.
Horwitz for the Ethics Board for that one-year unexpired term. That I'd like to point him to. Can I listen to the documents?
Okay, since the board has a copy of this in front of them, um, I'm going to ask the board to approve the mayor appointments by way of the resolution. Uh, would somebody like to offer that resolution?
Oh, okay.
Deputy Mayor. And can I have your second? Justine Frankel, full in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or oppositions?
Uh, yeah, I'm opposed to the Horwitz.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, it's one of those like...
Next, we're going to open our public hearing.
Sixteen bucks.
Uh, mayor, public hearing or, uh, Board of, um...
Do we need to approve the policy so that was part of the...
That was part of the, uh, annual meeting resolution.
Good, so we don't need to do that.
What, do you want to go into planning board, or do you want to...
Let's go into the planning board. So do I need to make a motion to...
A motion to open the planning board hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you'll offer a second?
I'll second.
Justine Wodowski, full in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and on our agenda, we have a hearing, uh, by Mr. and Mrs. Weedy of Seventy-Five Birch Lane for lot line adjustment. And there is tyranny. James Murphy is here to make the presentation. And, uh, Mr. Murphy, I'll leave your appearance when you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is James Murphy with the Law, Company, and Murphy and Lynch. With office at ten forty-five Oyster Bay Road in East Norwich, New York. This is an application on behalf of Scott and, uh, Kristi, um, Reed. Uh, Kristi is here this evening to answer any questions the board may have. This is the lot line application, and it's a lot line adjustment application, um, for property known on the section, um, block and lot, tax lot and lot, national counties. Section three, lot B nine, the dash four, um, one thirty-nine, uh, one thirty-nine dash four. Lots of one oh seven and one eleven. Properties in the R one district, uh, which is four north, it's, uh, one acre. This lot line application does not, uh, increase or decrease either one oh seven or one eleven, but rather comes about as a result back in, uh, twenty seventeen. Um, an application was made to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which was granted for variances on the side yard of these two lots. By doing this lot line adjustment, those variances will no longer be necessary because if in fact, uh, tax lot eleven, one eleven, which is presently vacant except for a sports court, which was approved, uh, by the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, is no longer necessary, um, and hence forgivably for you because it's anticipated that one, uh, that is tax lot one eleven, uh, will be subsequently sold. And, um, these variances were branded in twenty eighteen, were not grandfathered. So if in fact, one eleven gets sold, um, we would have to go back to the VCA for variances with regard to those side yards. Um, I have twenty-two exhibits, which I'm going to spare this board for.
Oh, no, no, we want me to do all twenty-two. No, that's quite all right.
Um, but, um, I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have, um, as well as Kristi.
All right, speaking for myself, this is a very simple application. It makes a lot of sense, and it helps the Weedy family not have to remove certain hard escape on the property. Um, my only concern, which I spoke to Deputy James about, is when the property is sold and transferred, that sports court would technically not be allowed on that property till a house is built. So the only ask I would have is that when the property is transferred, that the sports court be removed. Because we don't know how long the next owner is going to take to remove the sport, to use or remove the sports court. We probably don't want it to be banned.
Is that an accessory structure?
It's an accessory structure. I, I would just say, if, if an application is put in, let's say if it's transferred to a new owner, they, they do have the ability to keep that court if it beats zoning with whatever else is being put on. So you don't necessarily have to require it to be removed. You would, I, I think you would want an application in for what the plan is on that property. They may want to keep that court if it beats, if it beats zoning. It is the back, back part of the property, so that's a possibility.
Right, and, and I respect that opinion, but my concern is, which you spoke about earlier, is somebody buys the property, for whatever reason, they might wait two years to get an application. They might wait a year to get an application, I don't know. Um, obviously, they're going to want to build as quickly as they can. My concern would be that sports court just sits there unused, becomes an eyesore, becomes a trapped nuisance. So that's, that's something for the board to weigh in on.
I think it's far enough on the road, and, um, it's pretty flat, right? It's, what is that, basketball?
It's a basketball court.
Basketball, yeah.
Yeah.
I ride my bike best on...
I mean, it has drains, like, it's not, I mean, it's next to us, so we would never let it get dilapidated, even anyway, you know, even if the other person owned it.
But you wouldn't have the right to use that property anymore. So you technically couldn't maintain it, because the new homeowner can say, hey, Weedy family, get out.
Right.
And you might sell your house also. You don't, you don't know what your conditions are going to be in the future. You might decide to...
But they would have to mow the lawn and upkeep it that way anyway, right?
They would, but they might not. You never know. And then there's mechanisms we can do to find that or to do ourselves. That's only my concern. If none of the other board members have the same concern, we can move on. But I, I just want to make sure that that's not a problem I have to deal with in the future when someone abandons that court and outs, and all the local kids are playing on it, or something that we don't want to happen. Yes, sir?
It's actually not allowed, right? It's not, wouldn't be legal at the time of transfer and the process.
Well, listen, on, on the experience...
I mean, it should, I mean legally speaking, right, it should be...
But you can't have an accessory structure.
Well, yeah, so, but if they put an application in, you know, based in a timely fashion, let, and one scenario would be to keep the, keep the sports court and build a new home on property if zoning allowed, coverage-wise and so forth. So that, that's one possibility. Uh, you, I mean, you could write into it a timeframe, you know, an application has to be submitted in somebody days from title transfer.
That would work, but at that point, how is that enforceable? Because the, the conditions with the current homeowner, not with the new homeowner. Jeff can answer that question.
Well, if that was the board's, uh, choice, it could be that from the time of transfer, perhaps within sixty, ninety days, steps must be taken either to legalize it or to remove the sports court, and that this will be a covenant that will be recorded in the county clerk's office. So that, I mean, that, that's the only way that, that would be necessarily caught up. Um, but I don't disagree with Mr. Albinsky that when the, when the property is transferred into a new owner's hands, it's immediately illegal with just the sports court. So either that new owner will get a violation or wanting to legalize it in some way.
If I might be heard for a moment.
Yes, I believe your applicant wants to speak as well. He can't see, he's waiting.
This is not a case of first instance, which could go to other villages. And what's taken place in times past is that when a, um, adjacent lot, which is otherwise legal in terms of size, um, has, um, what would be deemed an accessory structure if sold separately, um, is that, um, that, an application is then made to the Board of Zoning Appeals with regard to that accessory structure, which is in violation of, because you can't have an accessory structure unless you have a principal dwelling.
Correct.
And what has taken place in times past is that because this property, uh, has a candidate to be sold to, to a purchaser, uh, who very, very well want to have a sports court there. So to take the sports court down and then have to build it again, uh...
It's a waste, it's a waste of time.
So therefore, by the time the Board of Zoning Appeals, here's the applica, I'm telling in terms of other experiences, by the time the Board of Zoning Appeals, here's the application. A building permit has already been filed for a principal dwelling, uh, allowing that accessory structure, this sports court, to remain. So that, um, this, this board probably is not aware of such, but lands in, um, Flower Hill are very expensive. Whoever buys this property is going to be building as soon as possible.
We hope so, but there's always the outlaw.
And this, this is what, this is what other villages have done successfully. By the time the, uh, VCA hears, uh, an application for an accessory zone to remain on, that's, and so the absence of a principal dwelling, uh, time has cured the problem.
Look, we can't predict what will happen in the future. Who knows?
No.
Um, so I think we ought to at least, I understand that we ought to have a grace period to deal with, um, getting a new applicant lined up for a new dwelling, but I think there needs to be a time period placed on that.
Yeah, um, we're, we're a minute or two ahead of time here.
Because obviously, if something goes bad, someone might not have any interest in doing anything.
What is a, what is a reasonable that time for you, sir? What is a reasonable that time?
Uh, I would, I would request a hundred and twenty days, which get a purchaser and get a building permit filed.
That's a little tight. As an architect, I can tell you that a hundred and twenty days is tight to design a house.
I just wanted to remind the board that the same incidents happened at, uh, two fifteen and two twenty-five Elder Fields. Uh, two fifteen Elder Fields had tennis court, property was subdivided. Uh, the tennis court was on the other lot, and the, um, planning board and the Board of Zoning Appeals allowed, um, that tennis court to remain until the house was built. Granted, it was the same family, so...
So that's, in that case, then...
But it's the same situation where the tennis court was allowed until the plans were submitted.
I'm, I'm fine with a hundred and twenty days if this Weedy agrees to that.
Well, I was going to say, I thought that seems a little tight to me also, just because anyone that were to buy is going to have to now, at this point, hire an architect. It might even just take, I don't know, a month or two just even to find an architect, perhaps, if they, like...
At least they have.
Then they have to draw up the plans, like, I just don't know that that's enough.
I, I, if I go any longer, that's half a year. Hmm? If you want a hundred and twenty days, it's going to be a hundred and eighty days, then that's half a year.
But I'm not sure, like, the tennis, like, right now, the basketball court, I mean, we've had it for four or five years. The only thing we've done is basically post it down with a, um, power washer, and it still looks perfect. So I don't know what can happen to it, and how it can...
So actually, I'm going to take a timeout. I'm going to, I'm going to let, I assume you're interested in this application?
Yes.
Why don't you state your name?
We're neighbors, we're across the street from...
How about you state your name and address the record?
I'm in Rallis, fifty-six Birch Lane.
Okay.
So we're right across the street from the empty lot. So I guess, I just want to understand, because we've never spoken as neighbors, just understand what is going on. I know they were granted the variance to put the court there. Now, if somebody could just have a discussion with me either this way or this way, what is the intent? You no longer want the court, you want to sell the land? Is that what's going on?
All we're here for right now is just to shift our lot line so that we're not taking the variances that we have.
So you don't want the variances anymore?
So...
We have to hold that big ordeal of, like, our kids' need reports and...
In fact, your decisions, direct your questions and stump your board's...
Okay, so, yes, and, and decisions not being made this season, right? There's going to be a...
It, it might be made this season, this season.
So people, because we've been spoken, you know, with the other neighbors, they're assuming that, like, the other lot line adjustment on Wall, there won't be an opportunity for people to come back and ask questions.
Why, why, why are we here tonight now?
Because, first of all, we were not given any information. There's a hearing tonight, I have no idea why the hearing's going on.
Did you not receive a notice in the mail?
That, there's a hearing tonight.
If you had questions, you could have called the office.
Usually, that's what happens.
That's your notice, that's your notice, that's, that's your notice.
Well, there was, they give information, attachments, exhibits, anything?
They don't, they don't...
Everybody has to come and...
Deeply, so deeply...
Okay, it's all right, so let's just understand, because from, from a sale perspective, right? When you're going to market this property and put it on the market, what are you going to tell the buyers? That there's a condition attached to this, and you have to make it, so you set a price. As a realtor, I'll just tell you, I'm going to understand, how do you market this properly? You're going to tell them, is it, there's a covenant that you have to abide by? You either have this period of time, and you take on the obligation to remove it? It will be removed, like, it can either be removed, or it has to...
I will ask our village attorney to answer that, because I'm not...
So I think what's being discussed is that it would have to be legalized within, what was being discussed was a hundred and twenty days, so whether that means the structure is removed or the structure remains and an application goes before the Board of Zoning Appeals to say, we want to keep that structure and presumably at the same time.
Go for variance.
Right, but what they will be asking for a variance at that time is to keep an accessory structure without a principal structure on the lot. What Mr. Murphy is saying is that he can't imagine that, that wouldn't go hand in hand with somebody putting in an application or putting in a principal structure.
Right.
So the board was just concerned that, well, we don't want this to hang out forever. So the question was, well, if there was to be a timeframe in place, how much time would be reasonable to expect that somebody would take steps to legalize? And we were at the point of people suggesting a hundred and twenty days, and I think the concern was maybe that's too little time. My thought would be if it's going to be a hundred and twenty days, that it could be that that amount of time is set, absent good cause shown by further, uh, application to the board. So suppose you get to ninety days, and the current owner realizes, my architect, we don't have plans yet, uh, had to change architects, or, and there could be any number of very good reasons why somebody would say, we're not ready in a hundred and twenty days. They would come back before the board and say, we need a little more time.
That's what, that's my concern, is that there would be another extension of time. And then when this lot line adjustment, if it is granted, will they be permitted to use? Is it like, kind of have your cake and eat it too? Like, you got your lot line adjustment, but since you didn't sell the land, you can use...
There's two, there's, there's two things happening. One is, there's a lot line adjustment, and that's totally on the current owner.
Right.
And, and, and that's really just preparing the way so that bank and then field off the second lot to sell, which is the second one. So they, there, there, that has to happen serially, like, uh...
As long as they own the property, they have the right to go on and use it. But nobody's home there until they decide to themselves.
Right.
Land, separate.
Unless they decide to build another house.
They could build the house themselves if they wanted to, it's a legal, conforming lot.
Have two houses.
And, and keep the sports court there.
If it, if it...
They have to go for a variance.
Not if it complies with the current zoning for that sake.
Okay, so why was there a need for a variance the first time to put the court?
The var, the variance is not for the sports court. The variance is making, uh, her current property once the subdivision is made, legal.
I don't mean this one, I mean the first one they went through.
I can explain that one.
Yeah.
Uh, the variance was...
Can I, can I?
Side, uh, side yard, right?
Side yard variance.
Right, that's what I, that's what I remember, lighting it.
Why don't you let Miss Albinsky clarify?
It was a vacant lot, there, there was a house there before. There was a house that was knocked, it was built nineteen fifty, it was knocked down in two thousand nine. Uh, and then the owners at that time bought, bought that lot. So when they wanted to put a sports court on there, they looked at the zoning of the two lots, because they always were two separate lots. Some of the side yards were non-conforming. So when they wanted to put the sports court, we looked at it as, at two separate lots, even though it owned by one owner, to make, to, to make a zoning requirement that they filed for a zoning variance for those slight setbacks on the, um, side yards of, of existing things, plus the sports court being on a separate lot.
But now, once they sell the property, it's a, it's a rear lot.
Right, that's, that's...
So now it's probably, it could be, it probably hasn't right, that's...
So by adjusting the lot line, and again, the lot line adjustment keeps the exact same square footage of each lot. It's just twisting it so that some improvements on the, on the lot, on number seventy-five are now legal and are, are no longer needed.
Right. A point of information, in, uh, map of Lums, uh, Lemsen, which was approved by this village in, um, nineteen forty-eight, um, these two lots were on, on that map as approved building lots, one acre building lots, lot eighty-six and eighty-seven respectively. So we had two building lots.
Yeah, and there was, I looked at the old plans, it's a beautiful house.
Exactly. My thought with regard to the one twenty was, was this. Um, I'm requesting and proposing a hundred and twenty days for us to file a building permit with regard to a, um, a purchaser. Um, because it may take a hundred and twenty days to, one, uh, go to contract, and two, because that normally takes sixty days.
Well, say it should be after the transfer.
And then get a building permit application filed, in which, in that building permit, we will be asking for, uh, the accessory dwelling to, uh, to remain with. And during that time period, we go to the VCA.
If it even, as an architect, I can't imagine designing a house around a sports court.
I would, that'd be the first thing that, that goes.
Most likely.
Because they probably don't want to pull.
Maybe not.
Maybe not, but, yeah, it's unlikely that someone's going to...
I'm fine with the clock starting. So after transfer, with the date that the deed is transferred, that's when the, the shot clock should start.
Yeah.
Not, no, not early.
And, and I think, I think Mr. Blinkoff's notion of, of possibly revisiting based on circumstances presented to, to, to the board, they have, let's say they have an architect, he's still working on it, whatever the reasons may be, I think you need that opportunity, because it is a short term. So I think, I think it's good to keep, I was going to say, a hundred and twenty days,
I was going to add Jeff's...
With the ability to, to revisit a situation presented.
That sounds reasonable, is that reasonable to be in here? So...
Okay.
Yeah, because the narrow question before you this evening, of course, is simply a lot line adjustment. What happens after that, um, remains to be seen.
Exactly. So I'd like to make, Jeff will fix my question.
Maybe there, there's other members of the audience just looking for anybody else that has questions.
Anyone else want to speak about this application? No, sir?
Thank you, anyway.
Okay.
Do you want to say anything else, Mrs. Weedy? She had her hand raised. Don't, you're wrong.
Don't say it.
Don't say it, you're going to be happy. I'd like to make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment that's being proposed today. Subject to...
Um, and I would suggest that it would be subject to, at the time of sale, into, uh, some, a person other than the current owner, um, that within a hundred and twenty days thereafter, the property is to brought, is to be legalized either by removal of the sports court or a building permit application being filed by the then-owner, and further subject to, um, within that one hundred and twenty day period, that that be absent good cause shown to the Board of Trustees, uh, with respect to that, to the same. Uh, I'd also suggest that for the purposes of secret, that perhaps the board could make a motion for the purposes of secret, this is, um, and unless an actual, that would, that would have no significant impact on the environment, then no further action would be taken.
So I will make that motion with the secret attachment to you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll go to all the board, uh, Justine Wodowski.
Aye.
Justine Dorfman.
Aye.
Uh, Justine Frankel.
Aye.
Justine Collins.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Weedy, for, Mrs. Weedy, and thank you, Mr. Murphy, for keeping this short.
Thank you for the professionalism and patience.
And you can get back home.
Happy Easter, plus one.
Thank you.
Maybe we're not going to hear you, are we?
Appreciate it.
Okay, so, um, that concludes our planning board hearing. I have a motion to put in the planning board hearing.
I'll make the motion.
And second, Justine Frankel.
Now I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Yes.
Where's the public?
So I have a second.
I'll second.
No, I thought you said...
I'll second.
Oh, sorry.
I thought, I'm actually good.
I couldn't hear more.
I would say, uh, the...
All right. Local law A. We have discussed this in the past. This is to amend chapter one nineteen H fences to allow homeowners that have properties abiding, uh, what's that, Northern Boulevard twenty-five A, to have six-foot fences only on that portion that abuts twenty-five A. We've had multiple discussions on this. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public?
Okay.
That being said, now, I would like to make, to make a motion to pass local law A of twenty twenty-four, amendment chapter one nineteen H fences.
I could also make a, yes, motion, a secret motion, uh, declaring this a type two action, um, for this and for all other public hearings this evening.
Oh, I'll make that motion. Seconded by?
Okay, Justine Dorfman. Full in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
The next public hearing is for local law B, replacing chapter two nineteen trees, which we discussed in the past as well. The reason we've had this public hearing is to strengthen our tree code to protect our trees. We refer, and we are going to protect them, because we realize it's an important resource for Flower Hill. Do I have any questions from the board upon this lovely, um, local law B? No, do I have any question?
We have a question.
No questions.
We had this spirited debate a few meetings ago about what started treating less a shrub. Have we, have we clarified, um, that point?
Some very interesting questions, Gary, thank you for asking that.
You have to ask a shrub.
It's an expression of the arborist.
Listen, I say we pass them on now. If it doesn't work, we can fix it, like we fixed up a wall.
I believe so.
Are there any questions from the public? No. That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve local law B of twenty twenty-four, replacing chapter two nineteen trees. Do I have a second?
Do I have a second? In favor?
Aye.
May I just?
Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I may, just one point of clarification, I don't know if this is...
There is a difference.
We'll, we'll create a, a bigger discussion, but in terms of tree versus shrub, the definition of tree, I think is helpful in that, because whatever the, the plant type is, it has to be seven inches in diameter or greater at a height of four feet from ground level in terms of the trunk. So that, that's a pretty large...
What, do you want the definition by the American Arborist Society?
I prefer to go with the discretion of the arborist, because we do require replants, the tree removal, and if somebody comes with a stick, I say, well, that's a tree, you know...
No, 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 I'm just saying what the definition is in terms of if you press something down.
The two is totally different things, all right? A tree has a single woody stem from which the branches grow from. A shrub has multiple crowns without a main stem.
Wait a minute, that, that can all be a tree.
We also haven't, in the definition...
I'm finding it a tree.
It's not.
No, we... No.
Oh, so it is, technically.
In the definition, there are exclusions.
Uh-huh.
It, it, I'm reading the definition, excluded from the definition are landscape shrubs, including but not limited to, are abiding in the... are abiding in the side. Holly, juniper, wintercreeper, I don't know what that is.
What's?
Azalea and rhododendron and the like.
Because they grow.
So that's, that's in the definition of.
Or the purpose of it being excluded.
I guess because it's a, it's a shrub, not a tree.
Yeah, it's shrub-like, it's really not a tree, to me, a tree, and this is the random definition of tree, it should be something that has the leaves fall out, carbon gets trapped in the leaves, and it's better for the birds, and it's better for the bees.
What are pine trees then?
Weeds, I hate pine trees, but so many.
No, that's why arborvitae, even though they grow tall, they're technically a shrub, but people consider them a tree, so that's why it's exceptions. Juniper also.
Because it's a giant shrub. Because we have so many people who want to plant arborvitae, of all of arborvitae, and say, that suffices for all the trees I've cut down.
It's, it's better fences.
I got a Steve.
And they can plant arborvitae, but they should also plant the one or two trees that's required. We, we want nice big trees that give shelter to homes, and as you're walking by with your dog, you get a nice shade of the shit.
You're right, but, because, you know, we have arborvitae that are possibly, I don't know, twenty feet tall.
Yeah, mine are at least.
At least that or more, it's a, it's a, instead of fence, I don't.
It's a privacy hedge.
Right, just plant weeping willows, and in ten years, they'll be two hundred feet tall and cover your firehouse. That's what's happening.
I would just add that there's exclusions to the shrub's removal, and that, that would be if they're required for screening, say for a pool or something that was required.
Right.
So, so that would be an exclusion of the exemption.
Okay, well, I think the laws where it is good, we have the, um, arborists to help guide us on difficult decisions. Let's go to the trees. So I'm making that motion, did Claire seconded it, did we vote on it?
Yes, we did not have a full favor?
Uh.
Any extensions or nays? Abstention by trustee Frankel.
I know, I don't mind him on anything.
With trees in this area.
Oh.
There's a topic with the village arborist.
Any arborists, I don't want to pay any more.
Okay.
Just clear it out.
All right, that's fine, in case there's a trial. Local law C, twenty twenty-four, amend the fee schedule. As a little background on our fee schedule, we are one of the least expensive villages here on the North Shore, we've done a comparison to other villages, we've spoken to other clerks, we've spoken to other building people, and we really, we've been way behind on updating our fee structure. It's been a very, very, very long time since we've updated it. We're also streamlining the calculations from the recommendations from our building superintendent so that we can more accurately calculate the fees on, let's say, building the building, we're not relying on the applicant to provide a, to make costs, this whole set out of equations, so there's no arguments on how much a house does cost, or how much it doesn't cost to build. And lastly, we need these funds to help with our budget. And that's my grand presentation on this, so these numbers that you see friendly on the chart have not changed since we spoke about this last month. Thank you, Ronnie, for making it easier to read chart than my initial high chart. Do I have any questions from anyone on the board?
We can't vote on this, no.
No, we are going to vote on this, we have, we have to vote on this tonight, because otherwise it screws my budget. Because the budget is dependent, the proposed budget that I gave you guys on Tuesday's meeting is dependent on this additional revenue stream.
I just wanna point out that the law does not become effective till accepted by the Secretary of State.
Till what?
Till it is accepted by the Secretary of State.
Well, that's all of our local laws, so yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, any questions from the public? No. That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve proposed local law C of twenty twenty-four, amend fee schedule, do I have a second?
Trustee, uh, deputy mayor Denise. Okay.
Do I have to make a separate secret, or the first secret announced?
No, first, first secret.
Exorme, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, with both, trustee Wodaski.
Aye.
Trustee Dorsman. Trustee Frankel. Um, I'm sorry, you know, there's an increase in the truth, just kidding. Trustee Collins. Deputy Mayor.
Did you skip me?
No, she skipped.
Trustee Collins.
Oh, I didn't say anything.
Oh, I thought you said.
You smiled, I guess.
Okay, trustee Collins.
I was laughing at the truth, but. Aye.
Deputy Mayor. Mayor.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Now we can go into our public hearing on the budget.
Do I have to close the public hearing, or?
I think so.
Okay, so let's continue the public hearing.
Okay, but first we have to do the resolution.
So.
Pierce.
So we've all seen the budget, we've had the discussion on Tuesday, the public budget hearing. Due to the additional costs of our security control, due to increase of costs of our benefit insurance, of all of our upon liability insurance, but Suzanne has a better word for it, our insurances.
Our insurances for the village, um, which are liability, the disability, the.
Cyber.
Cyber.
I learned about that today.
The dark, the dark web.
Yes.
The, um, automobile insurance.
Auto fire, um, so it's all of the.
And trustees, um.
Our liability insurance.
Liability, right.
Then encompass the village.
So, those are costs we really cannot, um, we cannot avoid, it's, it's just, it's, it's necessary. So that being said, we, I am proposing would be, after we do this resolution, I'm gonna make our budget presentation. But if we want to approve the tax increase I'm about to announce, then we need to pierce the tax cap. So, I am going to make a motion to pierce the two percent New York State tax cap. And I do this reluctantly, but it's necessary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna pull the board on this, trustee Wodaski.
Aye.
Trustee Dorsman.
Aye.
Trustee Frankel.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Can I abstain?
You can, you can abstain if you want.
Yeah, I think I will abstain, thank you.
Uh, deputy mayor.
Aye.
And mayor.
Unfortunately, aye.
Okay, uh, the motion passes.
Can I ask a question, did you have a meeting with Patrick Ryder this week, was that this week, you were gonna find out more about crime statistics or?
I, we'll be, yes, we will get to that.
The only reason I ask that is before we vote on the, you know, just about the need for the security I didn't know that would play, if you have any additional information that would be relevant to people being able to make their decision about.
How about I open up the public hearing on the budget and then address that?
Okay.
All right. So, for the budget presentation, when we get to expenses, then let's address that. Um, I resent the budget out to everybody with my cheat notes on, so you could all read the reasons why. Something else. Um, there's two watching, and one is me. The other one might be Rich.
It was a reporter.
I would hope the reporter.
Or they could always watch them, you know, to report it to do this statography. So, I'm gonna do the budget meeting quickly, I will pause for the security patrol, and we can have that side discussion. We talked earlier about our road conditions, our roads aren't pretty good, we do a pretty good job maintaining them. Fortunately, this year, we had a not very snowy season, so the plows are what does a lot of damage to the roads, didn't do that much damage to the roads. My suggestion is to do smaller, a small road project this year, hold off on the bigger ones, so we can save those funds in order to keep our expenses down, which affects my proposed tax increase. We're gonna bank the CHIPS funds for next year. Capital equipment, you know, Rich and the highway department do a phenomenal job maintaining our equipment. That's why if you look at some of this equipment here, oh, let me just go through my journal. There we go. You can see that a lot of our equipment is old, you can see a lot of our equipment is a lot of our equipment is way past its expected replacement time. Unfortunately, some of this equipment has to be replaced and should be replaced. We have ARPA funds to spend on some of it, and we've also been reserving capital every year wisely to save for the larger replacements. Now, we don't have information on that international truck, it's still in the it's still in the shop, they haven't given us a number yet. So this is the proposed capital spending on hardware. If we need to replace the heavy-duty truck, if it's gonna be too expensive to fix or not fixable, then we're gonna change some of these numbers around, what looks like for twenty twenty-four budget year, twenty-five, we want to replace the pickup truck, we want to get a payloader, because the old one, sort of previous slide is rather old. We need to buy a riding mower that is dying. And the request from the highway department was to get some sort of riding mower, which we haven't researched enough yet to see about electric version versus gas version, so we're still gonna work on that. And that's using up our ARPA funds, we're gonna kick some money out of the capital reserve for hardware for the truck bed on the other larger truck, and that will allow that truck to last another, possibly five years, because the bed is, it's not stainless steel, what's the current bed?
It's just, no, it's just.
And it, and it has nice fisticized holes, so it is rather nasty, so we need to replace it. Unfortunately, we should have bought a stainless bed years ago, but it wasn't, for whatever reason, it wasn't done. So this is my plan to have spend the capital, however, if that heavy-duty truck doesn't need to be replaced, we're gonna have to erase this and start from scratch and spend all these monies instead on a new heavy-duty truck, because that is our one of our two primary vehicles that we use to paddle the streets.
Can you lease these?
Yes. But we, we hold on to our equipment so long. It's, it's, it's.
Well, lease would not be an option to buy.
So, you know, and we can look at that, we'll cross that, but we have to see whether the truck, but since we hold our equipment so long, it pays for us to buy, we're not replacing at the end of the lease, you know, Rich bays the equipment, Rich personally does all the oil changes, you know.
We have to spend our money, and we must spend our awkward money, we must, obligated no later than September thirty-first of this year. Otherwise, we have to give it back.
No. Here we go, all right, so here's our expenses by category with fire. The, I like to not use this slide because fire is only affecting two-thirds of our village residents, and that's something we really can't control, so even though I had a good presentation, I don't like to use it, we'll go to the next slide. Here we go, expense by category excluding fire, the largest increase is in code enforcement, and the reason it's in code enforcement is because of the security patrol. Speaking to the commissioner, who was here on last Wednesday, he was here Wednesday. I hosted ten other mayors, we had a very nice meeting here in the boardroom, discussing crime, and how crime has gone down in Nassau County. Car thefts are down significantly, like they're twenty-five percent down, and an interesting statistic I found out is ninety percent of cars that are stolen are covered. I didn't realize it was that much, but ninety percent of the vehicles that are taken eventually get back to the homeowner. We talked to Pat about, you know, where we spend our monies, security patrols, which he's not a fan of, he is not a fan, he said that immediately ahead here, he's not a fan of having other people do the job of the police, and he says the police are doing an excellent job. They are still doing that operation, Overwatch, where they have the five or six police cars driving, all with their lights on, as a show of force. He did say that the peninsula, including our village, has received additional patrols, so they've, they've done that. And, you know, I asked, what about, um, security cameras, and again, he's like, don't spend money on security cams, and I said, well, let's, let's play players. He actually changed his mind a little bit from the last time he hears here, and we talked about license plate readers, he said, we will put in the license plate readers, so the good news is we, the ten of us, are going to work with their technology department, NCPD, to determine the optimal placement of license plate readers at key intersections in the peninsula that will help protect everybody. So, if you think about it, everybody has to come up either Port Boulevard or Plankton Road to get into the peninsula, and a couple other disneys, ways like through Muncie Park. But there's a way to put up enough cameras on the outskirts of our villages that will protect us all without having to put license plate readers every entrance at Flower Hill, so commissioner committed to placing license plate readers, which is good, that can save us some monies, and I'll know more about that once we get that meeting set up with the, uh, with the technology people, and then determine how many cameras, and if there's not enough that's gonna help us, then maybe that's something we'll look at, and then spend your own funds on. Does that answer your question, Ms. Collins?
Yes, I know you said you were having meetings, I was just wondering if that alters, I mean, I guess it, you know, I think about, I don't, I have no idea what my neighbors on, uh, East Flower Hill or whatever they call them.
Safe, yes.
You know, how long they're planning on doing that, or is it like forever?
I, I can't speak for them, but I believe that at some point their monies will run out, and I'm sure they don't want to fund this forever, but I can't speak for them. I think in conversations with them, they were looking in the security advisory committee, they were, they were, everyone involved was looking to see what the village's response is going to be, and I cannot, in good conscience, continue to spend a lot of money on security patrol. The group was saying, great, we want two cars, there are a bunch of people in the group that says we want four cars, actually, one person's saying like six cars. At a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year per car, I, I can't see spending monies on multiple cars. It's just, it's, it's not something that's fair to all the taxpayers, there are some taxpayers who we have here said, I don't care if my taxes double or triple, but that's not everybody. I'm speaking to residents that I've engaged with. They like seeing a security car, it makes them feel better, it makes them feel a little more safe. I haven't had anyone tell me who lives by me that they wanna see the car more frequently, they, they're fine with the frequency that they see it, so I, I don't, again, that's a small sample. But I don't have any people talking to me about it anymore, I don't know about anyone here on the board who's engaged with other people in other parts of the village, but I think the patrol is helping somewhat, we've had one incident of a car being broken into by AJ and Gary on, on Eastside, I believe it was. I think we had one incident of somebody creeping around someone's backyard on another field, but other than that, I haven't had any other reports of so one is a real crime, the other one is a, another crime, just trespassing. I don't have enough evidence to show that it's been successful, I don't have enough evidence to show that it's not been successful. But we did have a lot of people come to this board meeting a couple months ago, who demanded we take some action, and I would prefer not to spend this money, but I've heard enough people who want us to spend on some sort of security patrol. And just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we have to spend it for the whole year, where this will be something we will continually look at, and if crime is significantly down, we can end that patrol and use those funds, put them back in our reserves for next year, or we can use one of the projects that are security-related, perhaps license plate readers, or something else that, that will help keep our residents safe. If I look at our expenses, we already spoke about things that have gone up. Security patrol, we've got the increases in our insurances, which I meant early, mentioned earlier, employee benefits. You know, we're saving money if we're not doing the, a very large building project this year, isn't it? We're gonna save fifteen thousand dollars in engineering costs. Rich has been kind enough to work with the local tree company to get us free wood chips. So for at least the park, we've been saving a lot of money by using natural, undyed free wood chips instead of the more expensive dyed mulch that we get. And we use that as a test to see what happens. That's my expenses, do you have any questions on the expenses otherwise? And we did make that adjustment from Tuesday, if you saw, we, we had some monies in the wrong categories, so that's why the increases and decreases are pretty small, except for the, uh, highway stuff where we're going cheaper with the mulch, and what went up with the color, but the other two items and the three other ones, they were are not a problem because we just put numbers in the wrong categories, so we'll fix that. Here's my lovely picture, because colors are much better than numbers. You look at our revenue, so this year, we are expecting to, even with the proposed, sorry, with the approved fee schedule increase, the information we got from building superintendent was there probably gonna be less construction in Flower Hill this year, so that's why our licenses, licenses and permits revenue line is not.
Did you say that?
Huh?
Did you say that, is that in the lesson?
I did, I did, I think there'll be a little, little, you know, downtick. I don't think it'd be, it could be more, I don't think it'd be more than you've had. So that's why the number we put here is that number. Additionally, we are looking at less available grants this year, which is a decent size. Additionally, we are looking at less available grants this year, which is a decent-sized number to bring in revenue. And, that's the two things, the only other way to balance a budget is to take money out of our reserve. We're still taking some money out, which is the proper amount to take out, but the only other way to bring the money in to make a balanced budget with the increases that we're forced to take with the insurances, and with the monies we're saving by being very wise with the way we spend our monies, is to increase our tax line. And unfortunately, that gets us to the excellent. In order to get, so, we need to bring in 4.1 million dollars overall, you knock out about 800,000 for fire, interestingly enough, for the Rossum people, fire rate is going down a nice number, for the Port people, the number's going up a very small number, so that's, that's good compared to Rossum last year, our number went up very large because of the way they did the reassessment, they didn't do the five-year buy, uh, five-year phase, and they did it all in one year, so this year at least us Rossum people getting rid of this town. That gets us down to 3.3 million, we're expecting bringing revenue of 1.96 million, which is a little lower than last year's number, and again, that's because of low grants and not as much building as we expected, and that gets us to the amount of money we need to raise by taxes, which is an increase of about 200,000 dollars, which unfortunately is a 14% difference. So, if we wanna provide the services that our residents are expecting, including the current security patrol, we are forced to approve this budget this one. And I wish we didn't have to have the security patrol, but we have some crime issues and we have enough residents who have climbed it for it. Do I have any questions from the board?
So, Michael, is there, is there any precedent for, you know, this security issue, which you were kinda saying, we had, we had to demonstrate that we were willing to do something, right? And everybody probably may, may have seen the big article Newsday about, you know, what, exactly what Commissioner Ryder said, of either a lot of statistics, you know, something went from seventeen to twenty, it was an increase of thirty, you know, like, some of the percentages are ridiculous because the amounts are so small, right? But the, but the thing is, like, if we were to really open this up, and I don't know if there's a precedent to do this, in, in three months from now, or six months from now, whatever, and say to Flower Hill residents, you know, is, is there a precedent to have a vote of, you know, do people wanna, do want, want us to spend, because there are people probably don't wanna spend the money, there are people who do wanna, there are probably people that are, there'll probably be a pushback on the 14%, and I'm saying, there's a reason for it, but would anybody say, how come you didn't vote on this, like, if-
So we, we had this discussion a while back, a month or two ago. We cannot, it's not allowed by state law, to do a binding resolution via vote. There are only very specific things that we can go to the public on to do a binding resolution. However, and this is something I don't necessarily want to-
You mean referendum?
Not, not a resolution, but not a resolution, maybe that's more-
We can do a non, we can do a non-binding somehow, if we figure a way to do a non-binding vote, we could do that, if that's something we as a board-
I, I, I mean, I don't know if it makes sense, I'm just throwing it out there as a, how do you know when, you know, if you kind of instinctively say, well, it's sort of nice to have it really doing anything, I don't know, but it, it, it sort of, it looks good for us as a village to say we care about this, so therefore we're willing to address the residents' concerns. But at some point, you wanna reevaluate whether it's really doing anything, how do you do that, do you, and, and will people look at this 14% and say, well, how come I didn't, you know, I don't wanna pay for, just throwing this out, I don't wanna pay for a security patrol, so no, nobody ever, how come I wasn't asked, I, I, I don't know.
So we said, talk, listen, we've been talking about this for months, I've been putting in the mayor's newsletter since day one of these conversations, and we have a pretty good distribution of that, there are these WhatsApp chats going on, and you can see how many people are here from public tonight to discuss this, so it's not something that's being spoken about in the vacuum, people know about this, that there's nobody really here to say yay or nay, if you remember that meeting we had here, there was one vocal resident against it, and thought they were gonna beat him up. Right, Max? And Max wasn't gonna protect us. I was hoping, but I think David can handle something. When, when you have issues like this, I, I think unfortunately, the no people don't come out to say no, but, listen, that's why we're all in different parts of the village, engage with your neighbors, engage with your friends, and find out. For me, some people say I like it, and a bunch of people I speak with by me are like, I spend money on what, what do I need this for? So, it, it's kind of a mixed bag right now, I, I can't say I've overwhelmingly heard from people I've spoken with, either yes or no, but we can look at this from a month-to-month basis. I'm hoping we don't have to continue this for the whole year. You, you think I wanted to do this budget? I, I've been on the budget committee now for six or so years, eight years, back to the days of Bob Mattner, and we've always been very proud in having either a very minimal tax increase or, or no tax increase. I don't wanna do this, but I think my, our, our speak for me, and I'll speak for the rest of us, our hands are tied, we had a hundred-odd people, a hundred-plus people here, say this is what they want. And, and there are people who want more, but I can't in good conscience spend 300, 450, 600,000 dollars on a security patrol. So there are people who are doing it themselves, that's great, there are people on the west side of Port Royal, you know, sorry to interrupt, I apologize, he meant that, my back to the whole time, who are looking to do a patrol themselves, so if they're, I'm okay with the one car for net, if there are residents who want to spend that money, let them get a patrol together themselves and fund it themselves, because then it's protecting them, it's, it's, I, I just can't in good conscience spend a lot, a lot, a lot of monies, I think most of the people here would probably agree.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I think I just look at the, the 14% is gonna stick out, and you almost say to yourself, maybe we've been too conservative by not raising, you know, people wanna say, oh, I didn't raise taxes for how many years, and then all of a sudden you have to face the music, and the music's very real about the trucks, and all of these are very valid, we have to do it, but it's almost like-
I, I can't go back in time, you-
But going forward, there should be a lesson in it.
You could speak to the former mayor, you know, you started it in those days of being very-
I'm not looking back, I'm looking forward.
And, and that's why you were, that's why I had a minimum I was written in tax budget some years ago, that was definitely happening, happening without the commission of the tax cap, like, that was my original thoughts of the budget, without the, uh, without the security patrol, because we need to start replenishing our reserves, and we need to start having money to buy these kinds of things that we need to buy, because we didn't buy trucks for so long, it's now, could become a problem. And it's technically nine percent, not fourteen. Well, but I, I, I take the fire out, I, I look at the, because there, there are some people in our village who don't pay fire, do village.
Yeah, but when you say total tax collective-
Or of your, of your, of your village tax portion, it's 14%. Whether you paid, paid fires, fire taxes-
So, like, Gary, this affects Gary, this part affects everyone else here in the room, while an agent, because they're the handsome people, sorry Gary. That's why I was pulling, that's why I was pulling the fire out, because in essence, it's, it's, it's misconstruing a number to those people who don't pay fire tax.
But, 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 but the taxes for the fire are just pass-throughs, right? Whatever they, whatever gets paid them-
It's, it's, it's a hundred percent pass-through, right, that's why, as a budget, we've been doing this, I cleaned it up, we're doing this type of presentation-
No, that's, that's good.
For, for since I've been the trustee, because we always like to show where the monies come in, where they're going out, and if we were a village that was able to pay the same fire, this is not really a village, it, it messes things up, if we just were a simpler village and we had one fire district, I, I wouldn't be having two separate slides, it would be fired out separately, it's just something we have to do. So what, it, it-
What gets advertised, nine percent?
It's technically a nine percent tax increase, overall tax increase, but if you're doing analysis, it's 14% of your village tax.
But that's what should be reported, is the total tax, all the taxes we collect.
That is the, that is, that's-
The additional, the additional amount is nine percent more.
That's fact.
Now, what's, what percent of the nine is the security? So can we say, well, we're gonna raise it to, but now we're gonna raise it to seven?
It's like two-thirds, two-thirds of it.
Because, because security added. Because people wanna know why taxes are going up nine percent.
Nine percent, then you can look back and say, well-
It's not really nine percent, it's three percent.
It's really three percent.
Three percent, and you wanted six percent of them.
Right, so, what you can do here, you have to do a math of that. Okay, so here goes, so this is a good-
A hundred and thirty thousand.
This is a good chart here, so if you look at the code enforcement and get that excludes fire, it's five percent of the budget, of the total budget, including fire, and if you exclude fire, then that's six point two percent, I mean, the number's the same, it's just a weight of that extra.
But it's a hundred and thirty thousand additional for security, correct?
Affirmative, compared to this year's.
And now, what's, and what's the overall level?
Four, look at bottom line, four point one nine eight, well, four point one. And just, you know, we still are putting money in our capital reserve funds as we got every year, so half going to general reserve, and then the other half-
Go in three and a half percent.
Quick, yeah.
Capital.
Quick.
Capital, rather than that one here.
So it's really three point, three point two, is that right?
Is that right, am I right?
Do you have to say it again, or we picture?
Oh, it's three, if, three point two percent, this one third is three point two percent of our budget.
I think so.
Three point one seven one nine.
Yeah, it's one to your point, yeah, it's like five. So then we can say it's a nine percent increase, but three point two percent of that is just the security, so it's technically a five point eight percent.
Yeah, in essence.
But I think that's a, that's a, when you're asked to explain that, it just is more powerful to people than saying-
I guess, I, yes.
It's the same numbers, but it's in the presentation, right? You say it's not nine percent, nine, but it is that because of an extenuating circumstance, which was the addition of the security patrol, given, you know, events from, which were unforeseen, right, not perceived, and-
Right.
And it was in the board's opinion that, you know, we add a security patrol to it down. Okay, and something like that, I think that's, and that's, that's very valid.
You could, you could also argue that the big insurance hit is actually makes up the other increase in-
The what, Gary?
The, the, the insurance, the hit we're taking in on insurance, you know, everyone knows, right, insurance has gone through the roof, caused that, caused the roof.
That's another one, one and a half percent. So now it's over for almost five percent of things that we had no control.
In essence.
In essence, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, which we don't wanna do, but we have to-
Listen, we, we've gone over this budget, line by line, there's, there's never been a lot of fat in this budget. We could decide not to pave, so this year we're doing less, we could decide not to do any work on our islands, or any work on our park, and that's not something we want to do, that's like our big costs in the village. I have the office, the, the people are the people, we can't have less people, we provide, we wanna have a certain level of service we provide to our residents, and that's why we have to even have people, right size in the village. There's nothing really else to cut in our budget, it's, it's-
No, no, that's, that's what we're saying.
No, no, but I'm saying, we did the, we did the exercise of looking, okay, what can, what fat can we cut to offset the increase in security, because in ideal world, it'd be great, if you add this and you cut that, it's illegal, but unfortunately-
But I just think it's helpful after it's, when we vote on it, it's possible to go back and say, you know.
Well, how about I work, so before I send out the mayor's newsletter, I will work with you on that paragraph, if you wanna help me, because that'll be very useful.
Anonymous.
Anonymous, yeah.
Well, you're on the record when I say that.
It's not anonymously.
Alright, I'm gonna make a resolution to pass this budget, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Good, poll the board, trustee Lutowski. Justie Dorfman. Justie Frankel. Justie Collins. Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
Mayor.
I say aye.
The budget is passed.
I'm looking at motion to close the public hearing.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
We have a second. Justie Frankel, on favor.
Aye.
Okay, why don't we change gears and go to the ARC report, so I can let Mr. Upinski
Okay, um, the March 25th ARC meeting, ARC, uh, meeting, we had three applications, uh, first one was sixty-nine Country Club Drive, that was the second submission on that, uh, we still had numerous comments, and then they asked them to return for the next meeting. Then we had Twenty Center Drive, which is a new single-family dwelling, uh, that was their second submission, we had some specific comments for that, and we're approving it as, with those conditions, for the board's consideration. Uh, and we had a new application, eighty-two Elder Fields, which was a addition alteration that was basically a ban, a very small addition, uh, and that, uh, application was approved as submitted.
Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? I would like to make a motion to approve the building superintendent's report.
Do I hear a second? Justie Dorfman, on favor.
Aye, except for Gary Stain.
I just have one question, did, uh, we approved it?
No questions, we approved it, so.
Oh, a question. Sixty-nine Country Club, did they come back on anything?
Not yet. Soon as I get it, you'll get it.
No, I just wanted to be sure that this is-
Do we think we need Mr. Upinski for anything else, we need it for the zoning report?
We do not, but that, actually, I have an apology for the board, and it's my mistake, uh, I didn't have it in writing, and I'd ask to be able to put it in writing for the next meeting of the board, I think it's easier if the board has it in writing.
We'll survive another one. Mr. Upinski, you are dismissed. Thank you for coming, and I will, and thank you for your, for the public hearing. Alright, do I have approval of minutes of the March 4th and the March 26th regular and special meeting?
On my go, March 1st.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Treasures report, has everyone had a chance?
Is that for the both, both?
It was for both, I made a dual motion.
Thank you.
Any questions on the claims? As always, I read them over, I sign every single one, and everything seems to be in order. Yes, this is a light month, which means next month, we're gonna have a heavier one, because that's the way it always seems to work. Any questions on us? No? That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the claims. Seconded by, fight amongst yourselves, seconded by-
Justie Lutowski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Except for Max Frankel on the aubris. We did the ARC, uh, village engineer's report, I don't think we have any engineer's report.
Yep.
Sue, uh, the highway department report. I'm sorry, I stole your, I, I needed to talk about it, I'm sorry.
We are getting it, but we do need it also by the playground, which, that takes up a lot over there, um, but right by the swings and, uh, we use like the woodchips over there. We weren't getting it, but now, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be getting about twenty, thirty yards of it, and we're gonna start using it all in the park, too, like all our beds and all that stuff. Instead of actually buying our black mulch, that stuff will be used now, because it's basically free, so.
It is free. And it looks good. And Rich hasn't had any information on the big, um, Rich doesn't have any information on the big truck yet, it's still, it's in the bay, they haven't had a chance to look at it, but it's inside the building, Rich personally went down to see where his truck is. So soon as we know the status of it, we can make- So, soon as we know the status of it, we can make a decision on what we're going to do. And thank you, Rich, for tightening up the, um, leaky oil on the pickup truck. So, once again, this is something Rich does instead of taking the vehicle and he got underneath the pickup truck, tightened up a bunch of clamps and hopefully the oil leak that we have in the old pickup truck needs replaced. Rich fixed it himself without having to send it in for expensive repairs. So, thank you once again. Oh, we get applause from Mitchell. Um, administrator's report.
Okay, we raised up our reelection results. Um, I wanted the board to know that I pledged all our federal officials for a grant to allow us to conduct a sewer study. Um, so with the potential of installing sewers in the village, uh, that went to both us, our federal senators and to Congressman Swasey. Um, we, we need to amend our park policy to add no cleats to the list of things that are not permitted.
And the reason being is a local flag football league that perhaps Max's kids are in.
We need Christopher Martin.
Oh, well, they for some reason couldn't use some park last weekend and want to start using our park. And I said, great, liability insurance, pay for use of park. And then I said, wait a second, football, cleats. Rich doesn't want cleats in his park, because that is, if they're going to do it every week, they're going to destroy home. The dogs are, these dogs are bad enough, specifically dog league Bentley. Bad enough to our park.
I think she would have banned Frankels.
I think Bentley's...
We had the Frankels and the band.
I think Bentley was cleats sometimes. So, in order to keep, and if you want to let...
That's a bit...
If you want to let groups use the football league. I know, well, if you want to let groups use the park for organized sports, we got to ban cleats, because otherwise that's going to be the end of the park. Because I, I don't want the, I don't want the revenue from...
It's not going to stand up for organized sports.
No, it's just a... No, no, they, they do for practice, it's, it's always...
It's a practice.
It's a practice.
The cleats destroy them.
It's a legion, the guy came with all his little cones and he came with a bag of balls and they're like, yeah, and soccer as well.
And after the rain.
Right, so that's why we want to add it, so, um...
Because it's demanding a res, a, the policy, uh, we need to do a resolution. So, some people are offering that resolution.
I'm offering that resolution.
I can give a second. In favor?
Aye.
Arbor Day celebration, yay.
Yes, our Arbor Day celebration, which you will see on the last page in your packet, will be on April 26th in the park at 10:00 AM. Um, we're going to plant a tree, uh, dedicated to Rhoda Becker. And, um, we can order a plaque, a plaque for that. And this will also give us credit for our Tree City, uh, USA, uh, application for next year. And, um, Rhoda's family will be dedicating a bench to her as well.
So, Rhoda was negative 11 years old when she died.
You have 1924's.
Yeah.
The date of, uh...
You know.
Death.
So fix that.
Hopefully the plaque doesn't say that.
Yeah, really. Yeah, we'll make sure the plaque is, hopefully the plaque is not over yet.
Where's your wire now?
Mitch, I'll keep it on this.
All right, it's only, it's only in my computer. And that's me, that's wonderful.
All right, we don't have a zoning report. I'm going, I have a mayor's report. I'm going to be as fast as I can, but there will be questions. Um, security advisory committee, Matt, thank you, trustee Smith, for running that. Again, discussing crime, discussing what we continue to do to make Flower Hill a safe place. I gave some updates on some of the information I had. I attended a meeting last week with 30-plus mayors with our wonderful new congressperson, Tom Swasey. And he wanted to know what each one of our villages, uh, needs.
You'll be glad to know.
And for me, and for me, I thought for Flower Hill, I'd like the congressperson to focus on crime and a return of the full salt deduction, which would help us out. It was a very good meeting, it's nice to sit down with the congressman because we had a pretty bad congressperson beforehand who didn't sit down and meet with anybody. And the bad news is, there aren't that many grants for the congressman's current term, which expires November, because Congress didn't give the previous congressperson, um, any funds. So, Mr. Swasey has no funds to use over from his predecessor. I already mentioned the NCPD meeting with Commissioner Ryder, which was great to see the commissioner here. We, Frank and I attended the NCVOA meeting where we learned all about EMS cost recovery, which was led by the Port Washington Fire Department, who are the leaders in this. And thank you, Port Washington Fire Department, for changing their structure to allow them to bill insurance companies, which will help keep taxes in check for the people who are in the Port Washington Fire Department. Because instead of all monies just going out for ambulance, they're now allowed to bring in money. And they're only doing it for insurance coverages. If someone is, doesn't have insurance coverage or doesn't have any funds, then they don't ask the person in the ambulance for money. It's 100% from the insurance. Commissioner Ryder asked us to remember to report all crimes and attempted crimes to NCPD, no matter how small they are. Call 911, let people know. Because if the NCPD doesn't know that there's issues, they are not going to be able to come and provide us with additional coverages. Um, I've asked our building, sorry, our code enforcer to start paying attention to, sorry, to objects in the right-of-way and obstructions on our corners. There's lots of overgrown stuff, which makes it very dangerous for drivers, cyclists like Mr. Jeans and Mr. Bieber, and pedestrians. And I specifically do not like all these remainder of people who have lots of rocks in the right-of-way. And if you're a pedestrian and you need to jump out of the way because, or bicyclist because there's some dangerous situation with a car. Unfortunately, um, there are still some homes with large amounts of rocks that you can't get out of the way. We can allow them, we have a policy that allows them to keep some rocks, but not a whole bowl of rocks, which is dangerous. We're in pool season, so we get a bunch of phone calls about pool companies and residents dumping water in the street, which is not allowed, specifically by the State Department of Environmental Conservation. Code enforcer went out and taken somebody today. And he will be out looking for more people who are doing this because it seems to be a very regular occurrence this part of year. Rich, you could talk about Elder Fields. I'll let you talk about it.
Like the whole, uh, the other road?
Yeah.
They basically, um, they, they said, hopefully within the next month, they're going to be basically repaving that whole section that they ripped out over there. Um, it's actually about almost 2,000 feet of road. It's all paved by them, so...
Right, so we're getting free road out of the deal, from Anheuser Woods Road to about 300 feet east of Birch, all the stuff that was disturbed when they put in the gas main. And they're finally done with the gas main work.
Everything's...
The truck, and the trucks out a lot, the sand is out a lot, they are done. And then lastly, oh, not lastly. Tree City USA, 10th consecutive year. Congratulations, Ronnie, for getting us in in our 10th year. Which is going to hang the banner on the pole outside as soon as we get the clips. So, we'll have a second flag. The Webster Avenue Long Island River Bridge, Gary. I got a phone call from the Long Island Railroad, uh, sorry, Long Island Railroad recently. And they want to sit down with the village sometime this summer to discuss their proposed plans to replace the very old bridge. I request, I requested that they then hold some sort of public meeting with the residents. And we'll do it either separately or part of a board of trustees meeting, so that everybody can weigh in, especially in your area, who can and will be affected by this. Because I really, I told, whatever, you can't work on this in the vacuum. You got to get some input from the residents and what's the timing, how it's going to affect them, what traffic's going to flow, what's going to happen with machinery, which is why we're not repaving Mesa this year. And then lastly, I had a meeting with a group called Propel New York Energy. They are the people putting in the new, um, power lines from, I guess, Westchester, Connecticut to Long Island to increase the amount of, uh, power we can bring in and the amount of power we can send out with the new wind farms. The bad news is, they're going to rip up potentially, and I don't have the plans yet, potentially rip up Northern Boulevard, which they just paved. But they will repave them and bring it back to the state that it was. The project is going to start in 2026. There is a website, which I will send out to everyone in the mayor's newsletter. And if, as soon as I hear anything, I'm, we have a good relationship with the people who actually...
Huge project.
Sorry?
It's a huge project.
It's a huge project. And it's potentially going to affect the village only on Northern Boulevard.
So, they're burying the lines?
They want to bury these lines, yes. Which is a good thing, because this is very high, high, high volume of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And I don't think we want that up in here. So, that's a good thing. And as soon as I find out the if, when, where, why, and how, I'll let you know. And that is the end of mayor's report. Do I have any trustee reports? That being said, do I have any old business? Do I have any new business? I didn't do, um, public comment. And I'll say there's no public comment, Mitchell, you're not talking. Um, I would like to make a motion to close the board meeting.
Do I have a second?
I will second.